There's been several issues and things that have kind of...
I can't hear you.
I got bad ears. I got railroad ears.
You got railroad ears?
Yeah.
Okay, there've been several different issues that have kind of come to light over the past, it's almost been a year since we...
And also started with Johnson County.
And with Johnson County deal that we thought maybe we needed to come with a work session just to kind of discuss some of the concerns, some of the issues, and then whether or not we want to amend our policy as it exists or make any changes. So I will entertain... Mark, do you have anything that you'd like to say before we start our conversation?
Well, Commissioners, the public comment policy is a policy of the Board. You all set the rules and enforce the rules, so as far as that goes, I don't think I really have a lot of input into it. If you'd like, I can kind of touch on some of the items I've seen in other locations, but I have no input other than that in many of your policies.
Right, I understand that. You might go ahead and share just some of the things that you have, just with us, over the time of being a different administrative position.
Sure. One of the things that I think that we don't do here that I've seen other locations use that I feel is, was a good policy, is the ability to comment on items on the agenda at the time they come up on the agenda versus lumping it all together at the beginning and allowing a certain amount of time. We don't have public hearings on very many items. Those are the ones that you have to have that, but on all of our items, there may be a need or a want from somebody to make a comment on it. So that's one that I've often questioned why we don't have at the beginning of each agenda item, the opportunity for people to comment specifically on that item. So that might be something that you might want to consider. And then, public comment in general, if you have, I guess, a lot of items, or if you have a, it hasn't been an issue here for a while, but if you would have a lot of public comment, that you have a set aside time, not necessarily part of your regular meeting, but you set aside time so people can come in and make sure that you have a chance to get all of it included. Those are really the two that I've seen that, and one really probably isn't that applicable, but that's what I've seen.
City of Bexar does that, but City of Bexar limits to agenda items only. There's no open mic. But they'll allow you to speak when that item comes up on the agenda, if you have any comments on that. And I think Bexar works very well.
Lansing does it too. They have a time limit, and that's a way to ensure that we don't spend all night here repeating the same stuff over and over again. So it's worked, it's worked well in Lansing, too. I believe, when I was mayor. Yeah, Mike? I'm sorry, Chair, go ahead.
Oh, no.
So you still doing that?
Mike, you know, when we reorganized the commission just, just a few months ago, we reorganized the commission and we went over this issue. And my question is, why now? What is the issue? Is there a certain new issue that's come forward that is creating a need to change our public comment? And is the problem, is there a problem with what we're doing now? And I can tell you, as far as I'm concerned, and I expressed this a couple of months ago when we reorganized, and I said this when I was campaigning, that I would try to make it so that all the public comment for my, my district is the furthest driving time to come to a county commission meeting. Some of them 45 minutes. And I said that I wanted to move the public comment up to the front of the meeting for all public comments. So folks that are having comments don't have to drive 45 minutes and then sit through the entire county commission meeting, sometimes even executive sessions, to make a public comment on, on issues that come up. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm okay with the status quo, but I would actually want to open up, open it up even more for folks. I'm being paid as a county commissioner. Very rarely do we actually have public comment. A lot of times we come here, there's no public comment. When a big issue comes up, I'm getting paid to be here. I am more than happy to sit here. If we have to sit here until 5:00 because 500 people have an issue, then I'm willing to sit here until 5:00 and hear what their concerns are. That is, that's our job, I think. And, and anyway, I made that commitment to folks that I would try to get the public comment moved to the front of the meeting. That, my concern, this end of the meeting public comment, I don't think it's fair with the folks out in Leavenworth and Tonga Noxie.
Well, I think part of your question earlier on is why we changed it. It's because of the Johnson County thing. They were, they worried about losing their YouTube access by, so I think what we gotta talk about is, do we televise public comment at the end?
Well, there's never been, my understanding, I read the Sentinel had a response to that. There was an article saying that that information was not correct.
I mean, we had a guy come up to this podium.
There's never been a YouTube, as far as I know, and you can address this staff, I don't think we've ever had a complaint on YouTube here. And the person that's supposed to control it, Madam Chair, if it's getting out of hand, you have to shut it down. And I do believe, I believe if it's getting out of hand, honestly, you have the right to stop it. I mean, you could just call right then, we're done.
We had a guy come up here to that podium right there and drop the F-bomb. And that person thought that that was okay to do that.
But I'm sure the Chair didn't, and I'm sure you corrected him.
I'm sure all the people who did it didn't.
But I agree, but no.
But I mean, if we lose our YouTube access, then we're on the cable channel here in Leavenworth, and that's it.
But we've had no indication or no threat that we were gonna lose our YouTube access.
You can lose it over false statements. You can lose it over slander.
Yeah, but there's, there's not an issue that's brought this before us right now.
And we're trying to avoid it.
Right, and, but there's, what I believe we're trying to avoid is hearing comments that you don't want to hear.
Okay, we had a group that came in here when we had the electricity off. They wanted to do public comment, and then they found out that the electricity was off and couldn't do YouTube, they didn't do their public comment. They just wanted to be on YouTube.
And, and there may be, for every one of those, there's probably 10 other folks that, and, I mean, let's just be honest, we don't have public comment here that often. A lot of times we go week after week and nobody is even coming. The only time this becomes an issue is when you have sandpit or flatlands or big issues that, that are...
My two years as Chair, thank you very much.
What?
My two years as Chair. That's where we have our public comment. Why Tyson?
And Tyson, Tyson's another one.
And that's where the F-bomb comes from.
Want to be proactive versus reactive, I think is, I think that's why we're here. Just, but I think that one of the things that both Doug and, just to kind of circle back around a little bit, let's kind of hammer out a few things first, is there a need to change the public comment policy? I think that by what Mark said, what Doug said, it sounds, and you said with Lansing, that it might not be a bad change to policy, to our policy, to allow public comment on agenda items to take place when that item comes up for discussion.
Let me clarify that on the Lansing, if I could. Lansing allows public comment in the beginning of the meeting, and usually it's tied to a thing. The Mayor can, as your last writer says, can ask the personnel in the audience if they would like to speak on it. A lot of times they don't, so usually they do it in the beginning of the meeting, but they are given the opportunity, but it's totally controlled by the government body. Usually the Chair.
But I just think that, that it kind of makes sense to me to give people that time so that it's, there's consistency in the comments and they're tied to the issue, so that even the people that have come, asked to come to speak to the Commissioners, that...
I'm, I'm supportive of that.
No, I'm just saying that would be a change in policy that just says on agenda items that we bring those.
I mean, that would be no change, though. We're, we're just reordering it in our, you would just be, as agenda item came up, you would be speaking.
It could potentially add to the amount of public comment, if you, depending on how much time you allow per agenda.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is that, you know...
I just don't want to leave, I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Well, if you allow public comment on agenda items, and that agenda item had previously been the subject of a public hearing, say, before the Planning Commission, I think you need to make it clear that the public comment provided in front of you would not be part of the public hearing record.
Right.
Because that was created during the hearing before the Planning Commission.
And I think that's something that the public may misunderstand anyways, regarding public comment and being part of the record and all of those things. Yes, it's recorded if we have the videotape and things, but it is not part of the official record of the Board of County Commissioners. And I think people need to understand that, you know, that that is not part of our record when we're...
If we do make a change, I think we should, one thing we should add is if there's profanity, disrespect, or attacking other people, you're ejected from the meeting. You're not just allowed to go sit down, you are asked to leave the meeting.
I agree.
It's too late. It's too late, it's already aired.
Well, but here's what we could do. We could delay the air of the, we don't have to...
Are you censoring that?
No, no. We, we don't have to, we don't have, it doesn't have to be live. If it's recorded, no, it doesn't have to be live.
It doesn't have to be televised at all, so it wouldn't have to be live, but we used to, we used to delay the recording for the simple fact of if somebody said something that was inflammatory, that the attorney had to review it, and they had, I think we, 24 hours or something like that. But the Board removed that delay and went to live.
I would support that.
I don't want to, I don't want to lose YouTube because I am the one, the guy. As part of my, when I came on board, I pushed to get.
This is a way to solve both problems.
Are we still gonna allow, you're talking about the conversation about the agenda items, and people give the right to speak on that, lying with that. But are we still hoping for somebody to want to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Would that still be at the end of a thing, or how would that work? Because somebody maybe just want to address the government body.
And that's what I would like to see us move to the beginning. Because there's, I mean, why do they have to sit through the entire meeting?
Because we got an agenda.
No, that's not fair to people.
We have staff that's sitting here that's on the agenda.
You know, you have people drive 45 minutes, sometimes they're elderly. It is not fair to the citizens, and we used to have it at the beginning. Why can't we just move it up to the beginning like we had it? I'm even good with moving, going for 30 minutes of comment, but right now you've got it at 15 on agenda items. Unlimited on the comments.
What's that do, though, if we get done and there's nobody here and we've got agendas starting at 9:30?
I mean, you adjust, like we did before. We had it that way. We, you just adjust to however many people you have. You adjust the time.
No, but I'm just saying, though, the, but if nobody shows up, then we gotta take a break until we can start agenda items, because they list...
I wouldn't list it like that.
No, that's not, that's suggesting.
I would just say, and I know you're going to update, I would just say, is anybody on this that would like to address the thing? And then if there's nobody, then we just move straight into the agenda.
And 90, 90 seconds, there's nobody.
But I don't, but I don't think we, and I've been on both sides of this. Especially when you're doing McIntyre Room out there, remember, Doug?
Yes, I do.
You don't want to, you don't want to be going through this for two or three hours and have the same thing said over and over again. That doesn't accomplish anything. You need to have the three-minute timeline and ask people, I used to ask them on Saturday, is there anybody that wants to say something that's new to the situation? Because they've made it very clear, so there's no need to try to beat that horse to death.
Or coming repeatedly to say the exact same thing.
That's what I'm talking about.
Meeting after meeting after meeting, where that issue has been brought, because this is supposed to be things that are brought to the attention of the Board of County Commissioners that might be concerns of our constituents, correct?
Right, yes.
But, but not necessarily an opportunity to become, I'm sorry, but, you know, YouTube famous, because that's one of the things that, that we had to deal with, where when we had somebody who said, "I don't want to come to this meeting and speak because I can't be on YouTube, I'll come next week," that's not appropriate.
We had a group.
But, but we have...
Because that's not the purpose of public comment.
My suggestion is that that hasn't really been a problem, because we haven't had this repeatedly over and over and over again. You know, you might have had during a certain thing, like a sandpit, or, but, but I also would argue when the sandpit, and I won't name the person, but a lot of times, those people would come and they would have a different angle that they were, they weren't sharing the exact same information every time. And to me, that's their right.
And then, and then all of it gets put back, you know, I'm just saying, it's, it's like a tool for social media. Instead of being a tool for us as Commissioners to hear and potentially address or put something on an agenda because it's something that's been brought to our attention, which I think has happened numerous times, that things have been brought to us and we listen, and then we say, "This is something that we probably need to have our work session." What, you know, either one, whether we want it placed on the agenda or we want to have a work session where we can, you know, have discussion and potentially make changes, which then ultimately comes before the Board of County Commissioners on an agenda item anyway. So I'm just trying to say that, that I think that I want the sincerity of people in the audience that really want to address us and make, you know, for us to listen and hear them. And I agree with that. I just, when does it happen, within the meeting?
I, I think I, I think there's like two issues. I think one of the issues was decorum, and I think we need to make it very, very clear if you, if there's profanity, violate decorum, you're not only gonna be asked to sit down, you're gonna be asked to leave. And, because we have had a couple of times when that has come. And then, but the other issue is...
Do we have the right to ask somebody to leave this building?
Leave this room.
Commissioners, you have the right to conduct your meetings in a businesslike fashion. You're not required to have public comment or hearing except when required by statute. You choose to do so, and that's admirable. This is a public building. People can speak on the courthouse steps freely. Quite frankly, I'd encourage you not to control that. I mean, the old courthouse square was traditionally where people spoke and were heard. However, within the building, you have control over conduct because you don't want to disrupt the normal business activity. And just as somebody may have driven 45 minutes to speak on a topic, somebody may have driven 45 minutes to register a vehicle and unable to do so because of a crowd, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a balancing act. Ejecting somebody from a public meeting because of perceived dip, for whatever reason, is a pretty severe step, and I think it would be limited to instances where the activity reached the level disorderly conduct.
But if they, if they were speaking with profanity, that would not be accepted.
Much like the old adage about obscenity, you know disorderly conduct when you see it.
That's the discretion of the Chair, though, right?
Somebody who is disruptive of the orderly business of this Board would probably be considered to be in the realm of disorderly conduct and could be asked to leave.
Yeah. They just want to reach out to our insurance company to see what their opinion is on the open mic situation at the end of the meeting of public comment, as far as live and voting.
Commissioner, I'm glad you brought that up. If I could speak to you on that topic for a moment, I'm glad you brought that up. There's the old adage, you can't unring a bell. When something's said and televised, it's said and televised, unless you have a delay, and then you get into issues of censorship. The concept is that, well, the problem is that if you allow somebody to make a public comment and something disparaging or possibly actionable is stated, and it's immediately televised outward, somebody could state that you more or less allowed it, if not actually condoned it, and that you could possibly be made a party to that action. I have not sought a specific opinion from our insurance carrier or our insurance counsel, but that is, it's a topic, and that's what led to Johnson County's decision to no longer place public comment on their YouTube, because public comment is by its very nature not controlled by you. And you, although in this policy, you're asking for comments in advance, and I'd like to speak on that in a moment, there is always that risk that if somebody says something disparaging, libelous, actionable, that they could, an argument could be made that you allowed it if not actually condoned it, and could be made a party to any action. Aside from the fact that, you know, once, once slanderous statements are made, libelous, you know, of course, one's writing, one's spoken, there's also the damage to the individual.
Right, which was, over time, in my time as a Commissioner, we've had people that disparaged individuals, and I just don't see that, I want to figure out a way that we can keep that from, to a minimum and not be, like you said, once it's out there in video, once it's out there, people can cut a piece of it, they can, they can take just a snippet and not have context?
If it's libelous, and if, if there's profanity, if there's things that the attorney says could be taken out and not considered to be censorship, then I would be more than in favor of it, like a 24-hour delay on, on posting it up. I'm not in favor of muzzling the citizens. I don't believe that this, this public comment is very important, because a lot of times we learn things from the public that we did not know. And we need to have, and I also believe that, and I don't exercise this too often, but if there's a person that made a public comment and I don't understand an issue, I'm gonna ask them to follow up on that. I want to know, or I can follow up afterwards as well, but I, I am gonna use the public comment to gain knowledge about the issues that we're dealing with.
But I think that, that opens the door for abuse.
A public hearing.
And a public hearing, and I think that it's, you know, that, that I agree with you, then ask that person to stay and to give you more information and meet with them, or schedule a time to meet with them so that we can, and, and I'm, I'm all about saying each Commissioner should feel free to have things, agenda items placed on the agenda if they feel that strongly about it, but...
Well, and I don't think that should be abused, but I just think that's a prerogative occasionally, and I exercise that very rarely. But I do believe that if we limit public comment, the perception out in the public is gonna be...
But is it limiting it because it's videotaped or limiting it in general? What if, what if it is, you, we do not, at the end of the meetings, for things that we kind of, that kind of can catch us without having preparation or having understanding of them? That those things, that they just bring to us, because they're gonna be here because that's what they want to talk about. And if that's why they're here and that's what they want to talk about, then it shouldn't matter whether or not it's televised or not.
Well, the only thing about that is that we have a lot of folks in Leavenworth County that cannot make it down here at 9:00 AM to a meeting, but yet they're working and they want to see the workings of government. And a lot of times what's said in public comment is bringing additional light to the issues that we are discussing, and a lot of times those public comments, I believe, should be televised so people can hear what the public is saying and what the public is concerned about, and, and there, to me, there has not been a problem with this, though.
But there's narrow public concerns, I think, I think the thing is, is that, that what we're losing track of or whatever, is that a small group of people or individuals should not completely influence the Board of County Commissioners.
But that hasn't been happening.
But I, I think that, that a lot of times these things become, you know, somebody thinks that, well, when a comment is made, and we do it as Commissioners, quite often, I think I've, I've heard it happen, well, I've heard from a lot of people. Okay, well, let me hear, what is defining a lot of people? And then you say, okay, you know, 10 people out of 80,000 or whatever, that's not a lot of people. So what I'm saying is that it is, it's to me, if we have, where people can come in at the end of our meetings and we'll spend as much time as we need to listening to them.
At least on an agenda.
Because if you're here on, you know, not on the agenda items, I think agenda items are two entirely different topics.
Right, because we know we're gonna comment.
That, that if we can have that opportunity, because if they're driving in here for that, they're spending that time anyway. They want to talk to us. They're not wanting to talk to an individual Commissioner, they're wanting to speak in front of the Board of County Commissioners.
Well, we'll use, I mean, I, I don't really agree with that, but would you agree to move that up to the front and we not televise, so the folks could come down here and, and do that part of the meeting at the front and we won't televise it?
I don't have a problem with that.
And then, so the...
And then we, then we enter into, you know, then we move right into administrative business, but between, you know, that the public comment, and then we just have to make sure that we, that people...
My, my main concern is the drive time for people.
And, and that I can understand, and it takes up people's time, depending on how long our meetings are, absolutely. Some meetings drag on forever, and then other ones are just very compact, and I agree. So I don't have a problem.
I mean, my preference is that we open it wide enough, but, but not everybody agrees, I understand that, but it's, it's what everybody considers, but if we were gonna change it, I would ask, please, can we move it to the front?
And I personally don't have a problem.
Not all of them.
But not televised, so that we can just, that we can get that, that part of the business done, so that it's just, that we are hearing them, and then is it, after that, we can discuss as administratively, we, after that, we can say, you know, this person brought something to us that has a lot of merit.
But administrative, administrative public comment, or not administrative, but if it's on the agenda...
On the agenda that we do at the time.
That remains.
Yeah, that remains, so that, that is a matter of us hearing from and seeing, and getting the opinions of people on an agenda item. We should be prepared for all of that. I mean, if we're doing our job, we should know what's on our agenda, what is in our package, information that we're...
I don't know how these gentlemen feel, but I could live with that.
I mean, I just think that that would be, and that's kind of a compromise, I think.
I just, I just don't want to lose our YouTube access.
Right, and I think that's a good compromise, and I think that...
So what a hearing is that we would add a point, a time at the beginning of the meetings that would be for non-topic, non-agenda item public comment. And then during the meeting, when items came up on the agenda, there would be a public comment allowed on those specific items.
During?
What are my time limitations on those? Are there time limitations? For both, for the, the amount at the beginning, so if we have public comment before the meeting that is non-topic, how much time you want me to allow on the agenda for that, and how much does each speaker get?
What about 30 minutes?
Does it stay at five minutes?
Not exceeding 30 minutes.
That's fair, not to exceed 30 minutes. That's not to exceed, if, if we can, though, begin, we can continue the meeting.
Yeah, if, if there's nobody there, which, let's face it, 90% of the time, there's nobody there.
If we, if we have something on the agenda and it's a certain specific time that it's an item that will be heard, is that going...
We wouldn't go to specific times. The only time we would do that is for a public hearing or something.
I would still like an opinion from our insurance company. I mean, is that possible, if we could get that?
And then it's just gonna require control of whoever the Chair is to, if somebody ears off or, or starts into something that is completely, that we stop it and say, you know, as I said, when I made my comment about, you know, people commenting, you know, you get, you're, you're worried, this is, no, you know, you need to stick to the program, this is not acceptable, and then if, beyond that, that we ask somebody to step out of the meeting.
I think if they continue to be disruptive, we can always ask them to...
Can we add that to, at least a phrase about that to this part, that if you are, that you're, if you're disruptive or use profanity or...
I think it should be part of our policy.
Yeah, you can be, and it should say, you could, you're subject to being...
We move it for us to leave.
Okay, so then, how much is, what would be the limit on individuals on the non-agenda items? Do we leave it at five? Do you move it to three?
We need to keep it at three because...
That way you get...
Then you get more.
Okay.
If there wasn't.
And then we give the...
Then, on the items on the agenda, how much time do you want to allow for those items on the agenda?
Say, 30 minutes.
Fif, but 15 minutes, 10 minutes?
I think 15 minutes per, is, is plenty per agenda item. I think that's more than, yeah, that gives a lot of opportunity for a lot of people to be able to speak, if they choose to.
If I could suggest something also, and I've done this in the past, people are from time to time free and encouraged to come speak to you directly from that microphone. However, that is not the only avenue to do so. You each have email addresses, you have an office email address, you have a mailing address, you have telephone numbers.
Office time.
Office time. Public comment is not the only avenue for an individual to provide information or their opinion to you, and in fact, I would offer this, public comment is probably the least accurate and possibly the least effective, as opposed to the traditional good old-fashioned letter or its modern equivalent, an email, which leaves a record and which requires, quite frankly, a more detailed expression of thought.
And we do have that available right now. Anyone wishing to make comment on either item are not, are encouraged to provide their comments in writing.
Right.
So I can amend this current policy to reflect those changes, is there? So I can amend this current policy to reflect those changes, is there anything else?
Well, if we're not, I guess, if we're not televising open mind, then we don't, I guess, we don't get any from our insurance company, because that's what we were, that's what we were, Johnson County, to just drop the televising of the.
Right, because there was.
On agenda items.
It's not that you're eliminating the public comment, you're just not televising.
Not televising.
There's just, there is a difference, and I think that it just.
And it's open public, it's like just random public comment.
Right, it's not too specific to something that somebody is bringing, as, because I think that it's good for us to hear concerns from people that have it in the night, that's on our agenda, that they have an opportunity to speak to that, but I don't think it's, I don't feel an obligation to.
How's that going to work on like three zone hearings, being there was already a public hearing done at the planning commission?
And still, we need to make very clear at the beginning of each, if it's an agenda item, I think we just need to make very clear that this is not a public hearing.
Commissioners, you would need to, I would suggest the following, it would need to be made clear that after a matter has been heard by the planning commission at a public hearing, the record for that public hearing is set.
Right.
Person speaking to you, when that matter comes to you for final decision, they may offer you comments, they could bring things forward, but it would not be part of the official record. You would have to close that matter, send it back to the planning commission to conduct an additional public hearing, which quite frankly, could add 60 to 90 days to the process.
You mean if we added the comments to the record?
Yes.
So we're not going to do that?
You can't add comments to a hearing, public hearing conducted by the planning commission.
Right, and we weren't.
You would have to send it back to the planning commission and have them ream it.
We need to make very clear to people that their comments to us during public comment portion of the meeting is not an official.
It's not part of the.
It's not part of the record.
Public hearing.
But it is something that we may, something's brought to our attention that we may look into and address at a later date.
Yeah, I'll leave back and forth. Do we need a disfavor to many things, saying that Leavenworth County doesn't.
You'd certainly, and that would.
You know, we got somebody that thinks it's appropriate to come up here and drop the app on, you know.
Commissioners, you can.
If they're that ignorant, who says county.
I think your county administrator can ably put in prescription of disorderly conduct, profane statements, et cetera, et cetera, and you can cer.
Or.
And you can certainly put controls on it, and you could certainly add the following statement, statements made in public comment are not statements of the policy of the Board of County Commissioners, and should not be considered as such.
Yeah, I think that's something that needs to be added.
I was just saying, the government places one minute.
So do we, this is a change in policy.
I'll have to amend the policy and put it on the agenda for YouTube.
Right, it needs to be on the agenda, and then that gives people ample opportunity to have notice that this is the change, this is the way that we're going to conduct this portion of the meeting in the future, and all those things, right?
It won't be the next week, it'll probably be.
Yeah, we don't have time to get that in the next week.
We don't want to rush it.
No, I want, and I want people to have ample notice to understand that there's changes, and we're, that's an open discussion of some of the reasons why we're videotaping.
And can we commit that we will not revisit this until the next reorganization of the commission, because we just, to me, we just.
I don't think we want to live with that, but this don't work.
Well, I, I mean, I like to have a decision.
Because we said it's going to work, doesn't mean it's going to work.
Right, you're saying, or you're.
Not to get into this again, but I think.
We have to, it's one of our jobs, Mark, that we get paid to do much of the policy.
We're three, we're three years into an amendment to this policy, that's, because this was effective.
2020.
In 2020.
Things changed.
But as you, I don't want to revisit history, but just the reason this, in my opinion, my constituents are coming down from, from Linwood, a lot of them were making public comments, and then they changed it to the end of the meeting, and I did not ever support that, and it was over the sandpit issue, and that is why the current policy was amended. So I, I mean, I, let's just muddle through and get this done and live with the policy, but I don't want to see us coming back, like repeatedly, you know, because you get upset with somebody.
But Mike, if we find, if we find there's a problem somewhere, maybe not with what we're trying to do, and we have to adjust it to make it better, so we can't.
And I also want to clarify that if we have an agenda, like several different agenda items, that the same speaker can speak to any one of those if they sign up, but they need to sign up individually for which.
Yeah, I think you need to identify, because there's a limited amount of time.
Right, because we have limited time.
Most topics, it wouldn't be an issue, but if we had a hot topic where six people wanted to come in, we wouldn't have enough time, so the last one on would not exist.
I just don't want to see that if somebody comes here and is in public comment and makes a comment that somebody doesn't appreciate, then we come back and we're going to, like, now we're going to have another work session.
No, I don't want that for sure.
Mike, you beat that horse to death, we got you.
Well, but if something happens and we end up litigation over it, we know what we're talking about.
Well.
No, I just like the idea, I really do, when Mark and I discuss organ, and I do like the idea to allowing individual agenda items to have those things expressed at the time.
I think this is fair.
And I think this is a fair, you know, and that we have time for public comment that's non-agenda items, even as the commission, to kind of process in our minds what this means.
I think a good example of what Doug's talking about is, you know, we want to make sure everybody realizes we're all for transparency as much as possible, and a good example of that, if you don't know if it's going to work until you try it, is the night meeting. We went to night meetings for a whole year, because people said they couldn't make it during the day. So we tried to night meetings for a year, and there was zero people.
We had less people at night.
Less people.
John didn't even show up.
So we had.
I'm not Steve John.
John.
Sure.
The newspaper was in it, on some meetings, we had a few, but it didn't work.
And as far as transparency, I was surprised to learn that the statute actually says, we have to allow the public in our meetings, but we do not have to allow them to speak.
Correct.
That's the statute.
That is the statute.
We let them talk, because that's Leavenworth County policy.
Could I give you an example? I know it's your favorite entity, but the Kansas Legislature.
They don't allow public.
They take information at committee hearings. At committee hearings, the public is invited to provide written testimony, and it's considered testimony, within certain strictures. You have to provide so many copies, it has to be in by a certain time, it has to be sent to the correct body. Very often, people can offer oral testimony in front of those committees. However, there's no oral testimony in front of the Kansas Legislature when they're in session. You act as a legislative body. When you are conducting yourself as a legislative body, just as the Kansas House and Senate do not allow public comment during their hearings, you're not required to either. You can voluntarily do so, as Commissioner Smith stated, and Commissioner Culberson just observed, you're not really required to do, but you've chosen to do so, and that's admirable. However, you're still a legislative body, you have business to conduct, and you are allowed to conduct your business in a businesslike fashion. So that's kind of the, that's where you need to end up, the beginning is you wish to allow the public to participate, in fact, you encourage the public to participate.
Can I make just one comment on that?
Oh, Jesus.
After experiencing the Kansas Legislature and their committee system, I could say I don't want to model our openness and transparency after their committee system.
There is a.
Commissioners, hopefully, in closing, hopefully, in closing, I'm appreciative that you did not put staff in a position where we have to make a decision on who we censor, and my understanding of what really happened with the YouTube thing is, people, YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, they decided that it was okay to start censoring comments, and when somebody made a comment that they didn't like or support, and in particular about vaccinations efficacy or mask efficacy, they decided that that was bad information, and they were going to ban it from their platform. I do not want to be in a position where we have to decide if those comments are good or bad, so I appreciate not having it televised and allowing people to say what they feel.
That's exactly what I was worried about, that we were going to lose our access.
And that's the only thing that I'm concerned about, and so I think that, and that gives us ample opportunities as a board to make a determination if there's something we want to bring forward.
The paper's going to print it anyway, so it's going to get out to a certain group.
And I've got one thing, it's kind of a different subject, I've been asked by a lot of constituents about the planning board, and I know we don't control what they do, not having public comment, and so I was just asking if we could ask, if you, I guess I'm asking your opinion.
They have public hearings.
Yeah, those are all public hearings.
They don't have public comment.
Probably don't want to open them.
No, I don't want them there.
Why would they need public comment?
So I was just asked to see if.
No, they're just there to.
To be objective.
To hear, to be completely objective, to hear matters and things that are brought to them by staff, and.
But they do have, when it's a public hearing, they have comment.
They absolutely do, that's what I said.
Which are on the record.
You know, we have public comment about agenda items, and we have another public comment.
Well, but they, no, we don't need.
But there's state statutes that on, something's raised at 1,000 feet.
Public hearings.
Yeah, for public.
Yeah, I think that's, but that's their role, their role is not to hear the complaints and concerns of the people who are, the matters of our policy, that we have worked with to establish. Their role is to hear the matters that are brought to them by staff for social use permits, zoning, rezoning, I mean, whatever it is, that is what they're there for, they're not there for.
And even like the comprehensive plan, they hold a public hearing on that, so people have the, people have the right at those meetings to be heard, but I'm afraid if you opened it, and the attorney can address this, if you opened it up, it might start interfering with.
Commissioners, I will offer the final observation at this meeting. The last time the planning commission reviewed the comprehensive plan of the county, when you did the major overhaul of the comprehensive plan of the county, the planning commission received a grand total of eight written comments from 80,000 citizens. I would suggest if people wish to have their voice heard, they could perhaps have been the ninth person to submit a written comment, because with only nine letters, those are read, they're considered, and they're made part of a record. So with respect to public comment, write a letter, send an email.
Mark, do you have anything else?
Oh, I have plenty, but.
That's a good place to end.
I think if you're going to discuss that, it's probably more, a better fit for a work session with that group versus without them.
I just wanted to, I do not want to lose our YouTube access, because the only other option would be the local cable channel, and everybody out in the county is not going to watch.
Well, you said I'd have to get in anyway.
We're done, everybody happy?
Happy, 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 everybody's happy.
Can everybody leave on the end of the moon?
I think everybody's.
Live, everybody's.